The Murray County Ward Aides case make the order. Board members, you have a copy of the agenda? Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, I need a motion that we approve the agenda. I'm in favor. It is approved. All right, next on agenda, public participation.
Uh, nobody today.
All right, next, a board discussion.
I do have one quick thing for you. We are going to have some stuff on the agenda next month about CTAE. We're gonna share some, it's called CTAE, CTAE plus, which we're just gonna kinda share with you, kind of some new things with it. But we've also got on there, there is a new thing that the state's gonna allow us to do for our student, or gonna allow us, allow our students to do, where if they complete three construction pathways at the high school, that will count as their, one of their math courses. It will count in place of geometry. So, but that is one we have to have board approval. So that's gonna come up next month. I didn't thank anybody. If you've got any questions about that, I know Dr. Locke has spoken a little bit about it. But really, it's a great opportunity for our kids, for some of our kids that might be doing some non-traditional routes, because they're having to get through those upper classes and senior year, and sometimes they'll have to take a couple of classes their senior year. Whereas if they've been doing some things in construction, that third one would knock that out for them. So, the state approved that, that last year, but it has to be approved by the board, so that'll be.
Ever knock out geometry?
Yes.
Okay.
If you can build a house, you know geometry.
There you go.
Yeah.
And so, that was the thought, and so that'll be, we have to board approve that particular change next month, so. That'll be on there, and we'll have some more information for you. I have a little FAQ for you if you have any questions, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. If anybody strongly objects, and we need to do something quicker, because we are having to schedule kids. And so that's why I wanted to bring that to your attention this month, because we just kinda got some new information about it, but. Is that about it, I think, June?
Yeah, that's all we had to vote on. They've given us a lot of good flexibility, and some of it is common sense, like he said. If you can do three classes of construction, you've got your geometry now.
Yep.
How did the, how did the class that, how did geometry get picked out of all the curriculum?
I don't know that. I guess somebody at the state, it's part of the CTAE plus.
Oh, it comes from the state?
Yes, the state.
Yeah, it's something that the state did, but that one, they asked us to vote on instead of just saying, they say the flexibility's there. But yeah, it came from the state.
I dare to say the applicability of geometry with those construction classes, because they do a lot of geometry work in there, so.
The, is our construction, my, 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 stuff like that.
It's the.
It's Wayne Allen's pathway at Murray High. It's those very specific classways, classrooms, or whatever. It's, it's not fabrication, it's, um.
It's like woodworking, I mean, make carpentry.
Maybe construction one and two and occupational safety.
Yeah.
But it's not welding. It's welding scouts, one maybe for fourth math, but.
The state's been doing a pretty good job of trying to find some creative ways to work things out for kids that are doing these different pathways, rather than having to take like your college preparatory math things, because you've got a lot of kids that aren't going to a four-year university. They wanna do something different, whether it's a two-year, or just do something certification. And so trying to get them some different paths out of having to take a class that might not apply as much to what they're doing versus things that they wanna do.
One of the reasons I was asking about the welding, I tell you from working in the utility industry, that hot fitters, you know, geometries, all in it.
And this may be the first of more to come, but it's, they, we've just gotta get it voted on, so we'll have that for you. We'll go ahead and get kids scheduled and get them kinda worked out if that's something they wanna do. But we've got some neat things that are coming through with CTAE, some little changes here and there, so we're excited about those. Y'all have any other discussion about anything for, that y'all seen as far as on the agenda for tonight? Or, we got our meeting on Thursday night, you think from there, are we good?
All right. Now, it's, next on the agenda is quality workforce.
Boards, policy change time, it's policy season, Mike.
Yeah, we've got several policies that we had for first and second reading last week. I don't know if you have any questions on those that we previously presented.
Do they, do they give any dates, or it's approved?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be a new adoption date, revise date.
They have written off.
Yes, ma'am. Whether it's a revision or just the original, first-time adoption, we will have a date for assuming they're approved tonight. And then there's any questions on those we previously presented?
Have a teacher evaluation one, that one's, is just moving to a different evaluation?
Instrument, yes, sir. From, from teacs to Georgia leads. Which Kelly Rogers has been spearheading.
And everybody's moving towards that, but we are piloting here. And we asked the principals last year, and everybody was good to go ahead and pilot it as a system, so everybody in the system's doing it. We still ask some people on our leaks and teaks things, that's our classified staff, our principals. Admin, some of those, but everybody else is on, working on the new platform, learning, a little different, but there's some positives about it, we're excited about it.
Is it, is it still just like annually, or is it?
It's throughout the year, they have multiple observations. It's just, it's based on kinda what we were doing before, but it kinda pairs it down to give them a little more flexibility with how they do their observations. Gives you more, a chance to look more in-depth at certain things, instead of trying to look a mile wide and an inch deep. You can get deeper with a few little things, so.
And it categorizes the teachers, and instead of just throwing them into one big pot, they're categorized as either novice induction or professional. And they're evaluated on different standards depending on which teacher type they are.
And what's this one called?
Georgia leads.
Now, this policy, this one is just talking about evaluations, right?
That's the only change to that particular policy, yes. In addition, we've got policy IBB. Dr. Wright received a letter from the department saying that even though we haven't had any petitions for charter schools, that we need a procedure in place in the event we didn't have one. And so that is the procedure in that policy that we have in the event we have a charter petition.
It's got some dates, some timelines.
Dalton State's moving along with their charter pre-k through three, and then that latter grade.
Each year.
Yep.
Of course, they worked that out with Dalton City, and they followed this timeline with Dalton City. But they did talk to us about it, and like it's, you know, they're gonna do some, some interesting things over there, and excited for what they're gonna do, but that, their thing was worked out with them. All right, and last is the facilities use there. So we've, we've had some discussions with the facility use, I guess, and we're gonna, we've got all our principals together tomorrow, and we're going to go over and talk about some things there. So this is kinda the first of these discussions with this. Last year, we got together a committee, I think Mike and I were gonna talk about committees, and I'll kind of work with them.
We had a committee comprised of some different district-level people, Chris Crowe, and then principals. One from the high school, one from the middle, and one from the elementary, just to talk about whether or not we were under, undercharging. We looked at districts around us and how much they were charging for facilities use. And so we thought that we were, I don't think our policies, our price structure had been changed in a long time. And we thought maybe, especially with the new facilities we have at the high schools, and you know, the gym at Murray, of course, the auditorium at North Murray, that perhaps we should charge a little bit more for those particular facilities, just to cover our overhead. And now I will say that, you know, there is a, there is a provision in there that in, in the event that it's a group, a nonprofit group, that's assisting our students, that we have the ability to either lower the rate or waive the rate altogether, just depending on who it is and what they're doing on a case-by-case basis.
And I was appreciative of that, because we've got a lot of partners that do things for our schools at no cost in some cases. And so if they want to use the facilities and we can allow them to do it, I didn't feel it was, we wouldn't even have the flexibility to be able to let them do that without charge or at a reduced charge. I think, Mike, one of the, one of the discussions that's come up as we've, as they've looked over this and we've talked about it just individually, and I've even had some principals reach out, has to do with employees using the facilities. Not the, not the bathroom facilities, but the regular facilities. So if I'm a teacher and I've got kids who are not my own kids, as a teacher, I can't tutor for profit kids that I teach or kids that I'm in charge of. But if I've got kids from another school or whatnot, and they're gonna come to my classroom at four-thirty or five o'clock. I know we talked a little bit about from a code of ethics standpoint, I know you looked at that, kinda what did you think?
Kind of a gray area. I don't, I mean, certainly if they're tutoring their own students for charge, that's obviously an issue. But otherwise, I don't think it's really a direct violation of the code of ethics.
Gotcha.
You just said, teaching kids from another school, what about at their home school? As long as it's not their kids.
As long as they're not in charge of it.
That'd be fine.
Yeah. We don't want anybody, ethically, I wouldn't want anybody that I was in charge of giving their grade for to need to exchange money with their parents. And you get into weird places with siblings on some of that kinda stuff, too. I would avoid that altogether if I was there, if I'm in that position. But if I'm teaching, you know, fifth grade and a first-grade kid, you know, her mom approaches me and says, hey, I heard you do some tutoring, you know, that type thing. That's kinda what we were talking about.
I'm all for, I'm all for it, because we're in the education business. You know, and the parents and the children are reaching out to the teachers, you know, for a service. So I think it's a good thing to be able to do that, to be able to have kids get on down the road with their, with their studies and be able to, and should be, help everybody.
Does the same apply for sports? Like if somebody wanted to give private lessons?
And this is where you answer, is it an employee?
Yeah.
You know, if it's a school employee versus a non-employee. And to me, there, we talked about, you know, some of it's kind of one in the same. I guess, have discretion. I mean, we don't want somebody out there with a, you know, a hundred kids running around, you know, giving private lessons, but. I know that goes on. But that's kinda what we wanna discuss a little bit, so.
They add to that, you know, the other thing is, we just think we can assist. So if we're gonna do it, we need to do it at all schools. And, you know, if Coker and Chatsworth are doing it, and they're not good in the D town. I just think more it'd be consistent. If it's good for one, it's good for the other. I mean, if it's a good thing, it's a good thing, right? How do y'all feel about it?
Mike, along with the pricing, I know you said you did some research with some other counties. Have you researched that policy, or how they handle those situations at other counties also? That may be a way to get a little bit more insight, or have some different perspectives.
Yeah, I haven't, other than just looking at the, the, just the black and white of the policies. I haven't talked to anybody about how they handle tutoring, or helping with sports and charging for lessons.
Is there a lot of, is there a lot of tutoring going on within the school? Principals are.
That's what we were gonna talk about tomorrow with principals, just to get a sense of how many people.
I can tell Noah.
I've only heard it, one, come up once, I think, somebody asked, just happened to ask me about it. So I don't think it's been widespread, whatever, just like I don't think every night at every gym there's basketball lessons and hitting lessons going on, or anything like that. But when it comes up, that's when people just question it.
Well, I have some stuff about this. I kept hearing that my name got thrown around about it, because I didn't do it when I was teaching, but that, it was, Rinda did it. Well, what I did was I was contacted by the school, by principal and by teachers, and they called me, and I went after school and tutored. I tutored at Coker and I tutored at Aton. So, just so everybody knows, that's what I did.
Thank you, Claire, because I had somebody ask me, I said, I have no clue.
See?
I said, I know, I know Rinda's done that for years, I said, I don't know where, she might be as active as for all of us.
No, I did it at the school, because I got the kids right after.
Yeah.
But the principal called me, the teachers called me, that I didn't, I've never gone looking for kids to tutor. They all came to me.
And I know there's an instance where Bronson's relatives were taking lessons at Coker, and they had to quit getting lessons there because they said they had to pay the school.
Now, we did that as a board.
Yeah.
That we did that as a board. And for a while, they were giving money, because like the TVs that are at Coker, that are in the hallways on the sixth-grade hall, those TVs were bought by them giving lessons. And then we had one time Susan's gymnastics was running out of the pre-k, Amanda. She was running her whole business out of the pre-k, which I don't know how that happened for months or years, and we stopped her, because that was an insurance liability. She was running her whole gymnastics business out of the pre-k at night, and we stopped that.
That's kinda what we talked about, doing it up on the slippery slope of, of some of those things, if you're not careful. And, you know, there's a difference when, you know, folks are doing stuff and directly benefiting the school and then for profit. So we can look into a little bit more about some other districts, how they handle that with their employees. Like we were even talking about something as simple as a birthday party.
Yeah.
Like if, you know, a teacher at Chatsworth says, hey, I wanna have my birthday party in the gym. As a principal, I could not have cared less if they came to you, as long as they cleaned it up after it was over with. And it's not a for-profit thing, but it's just that employee use versus if fifth-grade mama comes and says, hey, I wanna use the gym, that goes to this facility's use, or do we all vote? So those are some of the questions that came up as we were working on this policy. Thankful to our administrators that helped with going through this and looking, because they looked over quite a few large policies of this. And we discussed it a little bit as a group last year, kinda want to update it for some of these.
Rinda, the, the problem comes in where if you're tutoring somewhere, using one of the facilities, and then a principal tells her teachers that they cannot tutor at that facility.
Yeah.
That's where the problem's at.
But see, I wasn't an employee. I wa, I wasn't teaching, then I'd already retired.
Yeah.
So that's.
But somebody, somebody says, well, she's taken the year for weeks, she's a school board member.
I might be then.
That's, that's the way they, that's the way they see it.
I don't, I don't know. Probably, I don't know, but, you know, I took a child that couldn't read, third grade, and he's, he's doing well. And another one.
Well, I think we're doing good.
I didn't have much success with him, he, it was, but, but anyway, but what I see is that if you, if we say we can do this, our teachers wanna recruit. You know, hey, I tutor, you know.
If it's benefiting kids, I don't care if they recruit.
But that, that's something we have, might not think about, you know?
As long as they ain't recruiting kids that they're directly over, then you said, then you got a conflict of interest.
Yep.
The rent of it will be, principals need to get together, and this is just a quick thought off the top of my head, and they, they probably some kinks in it. Aton and Woodline's together. Our teachers, if they wanna tutor at Aton, it tutors the kids for Woodline. They have no connection with them outside of, so if somebody comes to a principal and says, hey, you know anybody that does any tutoring, I need to get some help? She's got a list of teachers at Woodline from Aton that she can call, those teachers over there. And not, because the kids, or as a student at Woodline, she'll be calling a teacher from Aton and saying, hey, we got somebody, you gotta open him for tutoring, because I know you tutor. Then that would, that'd give a wall of separation about any type of ethics, because that teacher's at Aton, not at Woodline, which students have.
Well, we've had tutoring programs within the system where we've had money set aside to assist with that, for teachers to be able to tutor kids extra during, extra times of the day, you know, either before, during, you know, planned times, or after school, almost like extended day. But like, that's where we kinda have done that as a system to kinda help. Some of that stuff that you're talking about ends up being more of them kinda working that out outside of, of us, you know, that type of thing.
Most of the tutoring, I think, is towards, right for a test time and stuff, it's where you really see a bunch of your.
That's where we do a lot of our school, the things that we do. But like, you've got some that have family or friends or stuff like that from different schools, and even, you know, I mean, being our school system. And maybe, you know, somebody like that, where they come over and meet with them. I don't think, we didn't begrudge them anything when it came to facilities, but we just wanted to be clear, you know, how we handle those things. That way we can be consistent across the board.
I mean, if it's not, they can wonder if students know what's there.
Another thought of that is, you know, an issue always comes up is who's gonna pay them? When we have money set aside for employees to do tutoring, it's a small pot of money, and we, they turn in a timesheet and they get paid a rate for tutoring, you know, flat rate. And that's because they're an employee. So going back to that example, if a teacher, even if they're at another school and they're an employee, who's paying that employee to tutor? Is it the parent paying it?
Well, the way I was looking at it would be a parent, because the parent reached out to me and I was the principal, and I say, no, you need to, because he's a student here, you didn't call this person over here at this other school, and this is a private exchange between them to.
The only, the only thing that I can think of being a hiccup might be that. That, that's an employee, that's the school system, so they should be paid through payroll.
But if it's after time.
Yeah, they'd have to do it after four o'clock. Yeah, I see what you're saying, but if you're getting tutored by, it'd come back to you on this, then, or the policy. How's the policies require, I know state requires us to provide tutoring to a certain extent. What I'm talking about would be outside that. Does that make sense? Because you wouldn't call, you wouldn't call a teacher from another school to tutor in the, in the school forty-five minutes early, because it's gonna fall under what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you know, a coach coaches after school.
Yeah.
They're paid through the school system.
Yeah.
If a teacher tutors after school, should they be paid through the school system if they're using the school facility?
I think you got a point.
Or they double-dip them.
And you say a little pot, there could be lots of kids that need help, and then that little pot's gone, and then.
I think, I think, I think tutoring is a great idea, and I, and we get questions, I get it every year, do we have money for tutoring? And the answer is yes and no. Yes, we do have a small pot if there's instruction that kinda set aside for tutoring. I'm just gonna throw out a number, it's usually around thirty thousand dollars, and you think about thirty thousand dollars for the entire district. That's a small pot of money.
So have you been using that money for tutoring?
If somebody, if they do tutoring, then they, then they turn in their timesheet, then that teacher gets paid that flat hourly rate, I wanna say twenty-five dollars, maybe an hour, to tutor, and they turn in their time, and they do get paid for that through payroll, yes.
But that's set up by us, scheduled by us. We're in charge of it, and the principals, the teachers at that level.
So the parents don't count, do they?
We did that, and before the test, and there were, certain teachers would take, like I would take my half a reading or whatever, and I'd have a grade, and I got paid for that.
There isn't much of that.
Probably six or eight kids, maybe, it went per child.
I think tutoring is a great, I think there is a need for it, and if there's a more need than what we're providing, then we need to increase the amount of money we put in there, pay more teachers to do it, that pay them through payroll.
I was about to ask you, how much, do we exceed that every year? Or do we even come close, Stephen?
I'd have to look, I mean, honestly, it's, it's monthly into that, but I do have a set aside line item that's supposed to be used for just to.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I understand it best I can right now. The problem with that twenty-five dollars an hour, and I'm just using the same numbers.
Yeah.
She had six students, and she got twenty-five dollars for six students. If somebody's doing it, is trying to tutor, say, a par pro, that's qualified to teach a kid to read. You know, she might, if she's got four or five kids, you know, as, she's not doing it necessarily, you know. What's the incentive for her to do it for twenty-five dollars an hour with six or seven kids? Does that make sense? You're losing some incentive for, to draw these people in to do this, is what I'm saying.
I think typically with parents paying teachers to tutor is usually set up as a one-on-one thing. Your parent contacts says, hey, I'd like to, hey, is anybody tutor, that, yeah, I can do that. Versus where we set it up, where we've got a class of, here's these kids that are, have some similar deficits or whatever, wanting to work on, so we're gonna put these seven kids with you, that's more like where we direct it. Whereas if, for me at home, it might be Tim contacting somebody. The teachers aren't usually trying to set up multiples at the same time, I see what you're saying.
Okay, let me ask this, is there anything that prohibits a teacher or employee of doing that? Okay, let me ask this, is there anything that prohibits a teacher or employee of doing that at their home? Outside of facilities?
Okay.
It's like really, that's where the facilities part is, just the use of the facilities to do it. And that's where it's saying, yeah, you know, it's not, but we also don't want to, want to turn into a free-for-all. Like you're saying, like people are advertising, same thing with sports, you know, or anything, like every, we got hit facilities going on. We have volleyball, all these things that we've got going on. I don't think that's the case now. But it was one of those things where it came up as we discussed this policy. And we've got time, this is the first reading of it. So like we can, we're going to talk with our administrators, we can get some more feedback and some more information from systems around us and kind of see how they handle these specialized situations.
Kathy, I got a question. Is it initiated now by the, by the principal or the parent?
Principal.
So the principal says, I got this child that needs tutoring, so that's the way it's initiating that?
Usually the question is, do we have any money for tutoring?
I got you.
And we'll say, yes, if you need tutoring, then, then go ahead and then do the tutoring. Send us the timesheet, just like a normal timesheet. And we'll pay that teacher that next amount of dollars per hour for whatever hours you turn in. You could, if it's needed, you could allocate to each school how much tutoring money they have, like we do supplies and everything else.
I can't believe you got money left over with their scores what they have been.
So if a parent goes to the principal and say, hey, my son, child needs tutoring in this, can then, can the parent initiate that with the principal? You see where I'm getting at?
Can the parent ask the principal?
Yeah, say, look, he needs some help, I know he needs some help. Can I get him some tutor?
We do six weeks before testing, tested areas. So like at Chatsworth, we'll look at our scores and the ones we feel like can get from a two to a three. Because if you're tutoring everybody that's behind, you don't have room and you don't have enough teachers that'll stay.
Right.
But I felt like it's been very successful. At Chatsworth, we averaged about eighty kids, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, the six weeks before the test. And we had enough teachers that would stay with groups, would be ten to twelve students each. But they would take row, you know, check off who was there, do their own timesheet, put it in each tree. And like I said, we sent home letters around mid-winter break and then we started it six weeks before most of us.
And every school was doing that. So you get different responses at each school, but every school was doing that.
I think where we're involved in tutoring is when it's groups.
Yes.
And I think you all are talking a lot about one-on-one tutoring.
Yeah.
We, we are not involved in that.
Yeah, and I really prefer not to because if, one-on-one, if a parent makes a complaint and it happens on my campus, I feel like I'm responsible for them. But if they're at McDonald's or the public library area, it ain't none of your business.
So that makes, that makes a great point. Then they don't have to worry about any kind of issues, employee issues, if they're not using the facility.
The stage is very, they, they very black and white. You can't, an employee cannot collect money themselves. It has to run through the payroll system, which makes sense.
From a liability standpoint, I'm sorry, cover, go ahead.
Are you going to see what other districts do?
We can do that.
Give us a feedback.
Okay, from a liability standpoint, Mike, when it comes to, let's say that Coach Tim is over at the gym running, you know, basketball lessons for two kids in the afternoon and one of them falls and breaks their ankle. What's the?
No responsibility.
Okay.
But based on that, if you're getting paid for it, that's, that's going to go through her.
Well, that's what if a parent said, hey, I would do.
But you assume that it has to apply to the coaches unless it's other teachers.
That's not a good idea.
Not, not this one, I'm one of the private setting.
The thing I see, you've got kids who can afford twenty-five dollars an hour. And then you've got these other little sellers that don't, they don't have it and they don't have the opportunity. And they may make it worse than these others.
And that's where we have a little bit of control over those things when they talk about grouping and scheduling. Now, they're not pulling up, you know, economic statuses, they're looking at their scores and those kind of things. But that's where we're setting it up. But again, the question comes if, you know, Tony, the parent says, hey, you know, so-and-so, can you, my kid really needs some extra help on math, do you mind helping him? The question is, can they do it at the schoolhouse after school? Independent of what we're doing, this could start in October. We don't usually do this until kind of that February, March area. So I guess that's where the question lies. And that's where we can dig in a little bit and see what other people do and then get some more feedback. My principals, because you make a great point, like I would hope if a parent's approaching somebody that wants a one-on-one tutoring, you would think there wouldn't be a problem come up.
Until they get upset with it.
Until something happens.
Until they get upset with them.
Yeah.
They don't make the grade they wanted to make.
So we'll dig in a little bit more and get some information, that's why we got these multiple readings and things. So that'll give us some time to talk with everybody, see if I can get them information to you as we get it.
So right here on the facilities, on the gymnasiums, where we changed the fees to lease the gym or rent the gym for a day. I don't see neither the principal in here, but are they going to have to approve?
Yes.
Do they approve, even though it's in the policy? If we have somebody willing to pay this, these fees and they want to run a three-day tournament, the soldiers are willing to pay these, the principal still approves it before?
Yeah, there's a, an application that has to be submitted. They're supposed to have a million dollars worth of liability insurance. So there's a process that they have to go through to get approval.
And if somebody wanted to have a birthday party, that's free.
Yes, absolutely.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
So, you know, there's a lot of good that comes from running basketball. I know we got two state art gymnasiums at Murray and North Murray. Now Murray's brand new. Is the principal going to be willing to lease it out for a three-day weekend tournament? For a basketball Friday and Saturday and Sunday? Based on these fees right here that's in this.
Would hope so, but.
But it's their decision, or the principal's decision whether they do it or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure they might come and ask us, do you have our opinion and all that? But I mean, a lot of it depends on like what they got.
Well, tournaments, it's used to be ran in this county and now they're, they want to donate. But there's a lot of money that's brought in by these tournaments, you know, that's supplying supplies dollars to the school system. So it's more than just on eight-hour, on eight-hour day, it's twelve-fifty. So you might be looking at a fourteen-fifty for a ten-hour day. You know, so not only would this principal have some money to put in their general fund, but the whole county as a whole would be really doing well with, if you had any gyms going here with people coming in, eating, buying gas, Starbucks, I mean, going, we can get motels, obviously, there. But they're working on, so.
That's a good point.
Mike, Brenda brought up, it just says North Murray in here.
For the auditoriums.
For the auditoriums, they don't ever use it at Murray.
North Murray's just, quite honestly, is their auditorium is unique. I mean, it's just, the facilities aren't comparable. Gyms are, but the auditoriums are not.
As the, when the committee talked about that, I think they wanted to have that as a separate price just because of the seating capacity in there. The lighting things that go along with it, all that. Whereas Murray's might fit more into our PIVS or some of those might fit into a different kind of cost structure. So, because we, North Murray's is the one we get the request to use. And that's where we talk about those in-kind things. We've had some groups that do some things for us. We may not charge them or we may charge them less typically, a reduced rate to take care of them because they take care of us.
Somebody needs to start showing some movies that are based off fees rates, make some money.
I don't know, you gotta, you gotta pay the copyright for those movies, Tommy, they get us.
Yeah, if you pay seven hundred and fifty dollars, you can probably pay the copyright.
All right.
Begin the discussion.
Mike, can we vote on these all together or do we need to individually?
You can vote on them all together.
Except for the last two.
Yeah, just the six, first six. I, I need a motion that we approve the policy, G A L I D F A, G B I A, J B D, G A R H, and I F B G.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Kelly and Tony, I'm in favor. They are approved. Next executive session, I need a motion, we'll go into executive session.
Seven minutes.
We'll talk about the agreements with the sheriff's office.
It's on the, we can talk about it when we come back out at open session, that's fine. We can preview it, that'll be on.
I need a second.
Say yeah.
Hunter, I'm in favor. We're in executive session. We are in executive session.
Come out of the executive session. Kelly, Miranda, Allen Faber. We are in open session. Does anyone have anything else? I need to hear your motion. And then, Miranda, second. Come on in, Allen Faber.
Allen's first. I got selected.
We are adjourned. It will take five minutes.
Oh, five minutes.
Let's call the Board of Credit and贷贷款 Board of贷贷款 to make an order. Board members, you have a copy of the agenda. Are there any changes? If none, I need a motion to approve the agendas presented. So, Miranda, Sheila, Allen Faber. It is approved. You will please stand at 100 square meters in place. This person.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here, Lord, again when we're time, Father. And, Lord, we just pray, Lord, that you'll step by us, Lord, and make the right decisions, Lord, for the students and for the teachers and the faculty, Lord, and just be with us as we make these decisions for you. In your name we pray this evening.
Next, on agenda consent items, you have a copy of the minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made? If none, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Somebody.
Kelly. Second. Come on in, Allen Faber. They are approved. Right, next on agenda recognition.
Financially.
Public participation.
No.
All right, the next superintendent's report.
Yes, so we'll start off with our operational and financial effectiveness, and we've got our SRO contract. I shared some information with you about these before. We had the new safety law that was passed by the state, which caused us to have to kind of revisit some of those agreements we have with our local law enforcement, particularly about sharing information back and forth. But we also had to kind of, we looked at them, and they were outdated and weren't necessarily what was going on. So we worked with Chief Etheridge and Sheriff Davenport to get those updated. And so a couple of changes came out of that. When the contracts were so old, it was before SROs were in every school. And so at that time, they were paid differently. There were some grants that were paying for some and we weren't having to pay for. There were some in-kind things we were paying for outside of salary and some different things, fuel and whatnot. So as we came back together, we talked and got them all kind of squared away. So essentially, what we're doing is we are paying 70% of the salaries for the SROs, that's Chatsworth City and the sheriff. And that's all of them, plus the SRO supervisors, which also kind of act as an extra help or substitute when people are out. Previously, we were paying 75%. We talked about, and we had some that we were paying for 100% as well. But we also had some that we didn't pay for a grant. So, once it all kind of washed out, we agreed on the 70% number there. And we're not having to pay for any other things for them, like worry about uniforms and fuel or those kind of things. So everybody was happy about it. It was also a chance to sit and talk with them about kind of what the responsibility of the SRO is. And it gave us a chance to get with our schools about being consistent with our expectations for them. Like, there are certain things in the SRO that need to be involved in, and we want to make sure that's the case at every school. And then we also want to help them understand when they do need to get involved and kind of what their role is. So that's what those meetings are about. That's what the agreement here is. We had a little typo there, we'll get cleaned up, where it says Murray City School, Center Murray County School. But the one for the city essentially matches, I think, Mike, the one for the sheriff's department, correct?
Yes, yes, except for one provision.
And it's specific which one that was?
It has to do with how they report and how often they report incidences at schools.
And that was at the behest of Sheriff Davenport?
Even more specifics and more often than Josh cared for.
So that's really the only difference, too. So excited to have them in our schools. It's great. They do a wonderful job with our students, with our staff. It's a great safety thing we have here. It's nice to see those cars parked out front when you pull in. We just ask, I guess, did they approve those?
The city and county have.
Yes. And so was asked, debating to vote to approve these as well, so, okay.
I need a motion that we approve the SRO contract for the city and the county.
Somebody.
Second. Miranda, Tony, Allen Faber. It is approved. All right, everybody's favorite topic, it's finance time.
It should be, everybody's favorite. So exciting.
Top some dollars and cents.
I did go pull the tutoring. And so in our budget, the object 1-1-5-0-0 is called extended day extended year. So that's where if an employee, a principal or an employee turned in money, time for tutoring, we would pay that money. So it looks like if this was all for tutoring, because in our software, it says it's for additional instructional days or time. There was $15,759 spent last year. Woodlawn, North Murray High, Eton, Chatsworth, Gladden, and Northwest.
Ten out of thirty, correct?
Yes. Okay, so that is about tutoring. Next, we'll talk about SPOS. So the SPOS revenues for August were collected and posted. And for August of 2025, we collected around $636,000. August of '24, that was around $548,000. August of '23, that was around $554,000. And that anomaly is August of '22, $943,000. So those collections, if you look up there at the top, on the very top of the page, you see it starts at August of '22. And you can see it ticking off August, September, October, November, you can, all the way through January, you can see how high those collections were, you know, which is accounting for the fact that this one's ending earlier. So, you know, we, we've still kind of got it, I've still got it estimated as March of '26, when it's going to end. If those collections still keep coming in this high, I just hope to make it to January '26 so that we can collect through March, but I don't think we're going to get past March. It's not a bad thing, it's just, it is what it is. And we'll go right into the new SPOS.
So was the plan for renovating Murray County High School, there's a discussion ongoing on that, starting?
Yes, and part of it has to do with SPOS collection, but it also has to do with some of our bonds and bond payments and things of that nature. Truthfully, you know, originally, there was a phasing plan that was kind of worked in as far as administrative wing, cafeteria or kitchen, cafeteria, media center, some different things. With us going, with this kind of going through so fast and us having to move on, we've got money coming up. But we also don't want to overextend ourselves into a big project when it comes to depending on these dollars and then setting ourselves up for large bond payments that we might not be able to do. When you talk about a bond at that size that took to take care of the gym, for example. So what we've talked about is possibly flipping some stuff around and maybe doing the renovation part first, which is, would be the least expensive part that's going on. That's the inside, that's the floors, the ceilings, the walls, some different things on the classrooms that the kids would see and feel. And actually, Chris caught a wild hair over there a month or so ago, and he's like, "I can't deal with this anymore." And so they started painting already. And so if you've been in Murray County High School, they're painting through the lobby, and they'll be working on that kind of ongoing throughout the first part of the year. We said maybe Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Christmas, probably.
Just probably see it down then. And so what we're going to do is I'm getting some information gathered to you that I'm about to share with you about how we can pay for that renovation part over there, so.
How much capital outlay money is built up?
We've got about $3.7 million in that pot right now.
$3.7 million.
And we earn around $1.5 a year, so we did accrue that.
About $5.2, about, did you start it? Maybe because of summertime?
Roughly.
And so we talked about that as an option. The problem with capital outlay is we have to front it. And we've got to have the liquidity to be able to pay for it, because the state's going to pay us back. And they don't pay in a timely manner. So that's where, we're going to talk about some options and share those with you, with some things that we might be able to do to cover that, that renovation part. Then doing the painting helps a little bit. That takes a little bit of the cost out, just because we're doing the labor and paying for that with it. But we've got a couple of options we can share with you. Capital outlay is one of them. A small private bond is another, to where you could get it and have it, which also gives us some liquidity to where we could have some money to kind of use to take care of some of these other projects that come up with SPOS. Because ultimately, we're kind of preparing for October of '27, when our current bond ends. Our next bond that we've already done begins. And you're going to have the last payment of one and the first payment of another. And so we've got to make sure that we've got enough money there to take care of both of those with our SPOS and those kind of things so that we don't have to take it out in general. So that's why we're kind of working on some plans now. We're getting some numbers from Bryce right now to show what if we did a three or four or a $5 million private bond, when could that schedule start? How could we get that out far enough to where we're not making sure we've got enough with our SPOS to cover those? So we'll have some options for you coming up, and I'll be sharing those with you.
Yeah, because I mean, we don't want to take out the general fund, but if we can get them classrooms renovated, you know, earlier or whatever, that'd be good for the students, because that's, that's all your students are there.
I would love to do that.
Oh, yeah.
And so that, the question's going to be, do we do it this summer? If we, or do we do it next summer? If we want to wait, if we want to wait a year? How do we fund it? And so that's kind of what we're working through and we'll be sharing with you soon, so that we can look at the options and make the best decision we think best for the kids over there and then also best financially, short term and long term.
The sooner the better, to me, if we can financially digest it. I was talking to a coach over at volleyball game the other night, and he said with just the painting in the foyer as you come into school, has made a big impression on the students.
It's really nice.
It does, and I were tickled that they did that, and they've been working hard over there. Taking a little break this week, I think, doing some different stuff.
Probably next week, too.
Yeah, but excited about the way it looked, because it did look good. They had that stuff done for open house, and it was just a nice welcome back. And we're doing, and we've got some other buildings in the same space, like going forward, that's where that capital outlay money, if we don't touch it now, it'll continue to build up, and we might be able to use it to do some things in some other places. Because Chris would tell you, you know, capital outlay is there to kind of do the things you need, and then hopefully you get to a place where that and SPOS is maintaining the things that we need to maintain if we're not building stuff. And so that's where I'm excited about this little time we've got right now, because I think we've got a chance to do some things that we need to get done.
Chris, I want to, I'll tell you something else that makes a big difference. The grounds look a lot better. We need around the building and around signs. It's a big difference, so I just want to let you know it looks a lot better.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, Ms. Morrow got with one of their teachers over there, and they worked out, they got with Chris, and they repainted that sign. The teacher made some letters for it. Problem is they kept falling off, or people were taking them. So shout out to them over there for taking care of that. And I think it was Ms. Morrow worked with Coach Oliver, I think, and did some stuff over there, so excited, but it looks good.
So we'll go on and talk a little bit about the, we're still working in the closing of FY '25, about this close. Can almost see it, it's right around the corner. And so, but we still will be talking about '25 because I can't even give you the financials for '26 until '25 is closed. So cash, there's not going to be any much changes in your cash numbers, where you will see a little bit of changes the next page on revenues. You can see that we've collected a few more revenues. We're at 78,114,000. If you look right beside that, you can see that that exceeded the budget amendment we just passed. So we posted at 78 million and so, so we've already exceeded that, which is fine. You can do that on revenue. So we've collected 100% of those budgeted revenues compared to 99% last year. And then next page on expenditures, you can see that the expenditures are 79,43,000, budgeted at 79,74,000. So we're right under those expenditure lines, which we should be. Expenditures have to be in the black, revenues can go over. So we're right at 99% of expenditures compared to 99% last year.
Is this one there? Yeah. But is, this is not the end of the year. We've got to wait another whole month, right?
It's, it's very close to the end of the year.
Okay.
There's, there should not be any more expenditures.
Okay, so now that's it?
Yeah, should be.
Payroll in any case?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what we wait for, what we wait for is those additional revenue months that we get to collect for July and August. So what's really promising is that very last page, when we're looking at the over and under. So where we anticipated with the new budget amendment, we anticipated having, you remember it, originally the budget was going to be around $1.5 million. Then we said, nope, we think we can get it down to a million. We're down to a million 46, that's that yellow column. So we're under that at 929. And that number's only going to go bang. It should not go up, because we shouldn't have any more expenditures. I looked at it Thursday, and it's around $910,000. So from, to going from a million and a half down to 910, might, might go lower, might not. That is very promising, because that, all that does is help your, your general fund balance, which is estimated to be right at 7.4 instead of 7.1. But compare that to this time last year. Those numbers are comparable month to month compared to 4.6 deficit last year. So it's just an amazing turnaround on spending and allocating and how we're using our money. So like I said, next month, I'll bring you the very final numbers. It is what it is when I come next month. So I think it's going to be around between $900 and $910,000. So, next, any questions on that? The Georgia Fund One is your next page there. Interest is at $16,894.37 compared to around $9,000 last year. FY '25, we collected $255,000. We've collected for '26, $35,000. And we've collected $665,000 since we started in 2020. Additional interest income.
That ring will go down if the page.
No, it's not.
Things like that.
Yeah, it helps us in some ways. But it's interesting to see that ring go around the right side of the page, and you can kind of see how it's going.
How it's changed over the years. Yeah, and if you look up there at the August '24, the ending round of 2,000, $2,037,000 compared to where we're at right now, $2,000,2.15, it kind of shows you our cash flow, you know. And then you look at, look at the September of '24, went to 2 millions. October of '24 went, went, went up a little bit. And then November '24 is when.
Got to make payroll.
Rain the swamp.
Got to make payroll.
Had to make payroll. And we have used everything we had. So those are the times that we're watching very carefully. Our cash flow to get us through September payroll is your largest. October, November, and then your tax digest money comes in in December. So we got to get September, October, and November payrolls completely covered out of the money that we have. Okay. We only have two purchase orders for this meeting. We've got federal programs. It's a mixture, if you look, it's a little mixture of federal programs and a little bit of general money in there. The majority coming from. The majority coming from, uh, from federal for the, uh, annual renewal of that software. Magic School is for, it does what?
It's a ton. It's, um, AI, it's lesson plans, it's a lot of different things.
I know, it covers, it covers the entire district, so, you know, she's taken, uh, some from, looks like, um, E, is this ESI, E, TSI? CSI or no, TSI, yeah, four sixty two and four oh four, those federal programs.
The magic?
Yeah.
Still talking. That one will come out of the, um, federal forum.
Okay, so twelve thousand, two fifty one fifty is going to be coming from our funds, basically, and the other portion of that is going to be paid from federal.
Is this for teachers? Is this just for teachers? Are we doing anything in variety stuff? Are we doing AI stuff for students or anything? Are we getting to that a little bit? I know it's probably going to be common.
Some, some tells me students using AI already.
I didn't know if it was the appropriate.
They can use, I think, they can use some of the things that we have. This is mostly for the teachers to do things with them, but.
No, it's for both. So you, you pay for the student license, you get the teachers for free. This is the AI that we approve for students to use.
Uh, yeah.
That we're okay, we feel like it's safe, they're not out there getting into something they're not going to get into. And then it has tools for teachers, especially like differentiation. You can say, write this lesson plan at a different Lexi level. I need this test, but I need more questions. I mean, it does a ton of stuff. It's amazing.
So if you see the rate is by the student population, the sixty five hundred times the amount, that tells us that they base it on your student enrollment.
You can stand in papers and make sure AI writing in papers looks stupid.
Uh, next is, uh, this one is the general fund. It is, uh, Google Workspace. So it is, it was included in the software list for FY twenty six, so it's an annual renewal of thirty one thousand, five hundred dollars. That looks like that it covers students, uh, and staff.
It's our Google wise, it basically covers everything for Gmail, Google Drive, all that stuff.
So that was included in that object line for software. And that's the only two.
Actually, the, uh, the tech truck.
Yes.
Would you, uh, um, quote some out?
Yes.
Okay, okay, this is my next question. Uh, how much does it have to be before we take quotes, before we get bids?
I, we asked them, they got bids for, for that forest, for, like, Chris got bids on some mowers that were about ten thousand. We generally try to get, to get bids on anything that's got a price to. Well, he gave the mowers for the truck.
The mowers is what I'm talking about.
Oh, the mowers.
There were three, three different companies, four different styles of mowers.
So that was all four, all four of our local people that you got bids from?
All of them. I can't do it in every case, or I, I can't, but I, I try to do local if at all possible.
Yeah, we did the same thing with the tech truck, because they've been looking at that for a while. Yeah, and so that was the best price they could find for that year and that mileage. The things over here were three or four thousand dollars more.
Last month, you should have had all the quotes in there in your FYI.
The mowers.
For the mowers.
How much, how much we spend on them?
Well, all your quotes.
And the quotes too. I think, I remember right, Israel, those prices for the trucks were four or five thousand dollars more.
It's been that way. I've been looking at them since we had the budget meeting, so since that time, there's not been anything reached in our, inside FY twenty five thousand yet, so it's a hard trip.
Martha, what was the quote about?
Was that, what was the quote about the truck? Uh, what we purchased it from?
Yeah.
It was, they were the trucks.
Oh, yeah.
And they, they delivered it.
They did.
They delivered it too.
So this is a used truck?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought you got new in tech, right?
So I think that's it for financials.
Right, um, there's no other question. I think they, uh, a motion that we approved the twenty twenty two splosh outline. Kelly. I think a hundred and seventy, are you in? Allen Fager. It is approved. I, I need a motion that we approve the financial statement. Second. And, uh, Tony. Allen Fager. It is approved. Uh, then lastly, I need a motion that we approve the two purchase orders as presented.
A motion.
Kind of.
Second.
Shiva, Allen Fager. It is approved.
All right, next up, in the quality workforce, we had our second reading with our facilities use, which we're going to dig back in and find some information, kind of see. A couple of things that we talked about with that, uh, the charter school again, just from the state, we have to have that outline that's in there. Um, you also have a handbook for PIVS, uh, that's in there, and I was talking to Brenda about that. PIVS has a, a separate handbook at the moment, just because they've got some unique situations over there that have to be, uh, handled, uh, differently. There you go, there's a, that may.
Is that the real one?
This is the clean.
Clean copy, there you go.
Is this what they get?
Yes, it's actually on, it's on the website. Uh, they don't print out. We, we at one time had, um, the Pleasant Valley part of the handbook in our regular handbook, and it made it extremely long. And, uh, you know, kids that wouldn't want to chat for it really don't need the Pleasant Valley information. The, the big difference, um, is obviously the punishment, because, um, they're already at the alternative schools. So a lot of our, uh, major offenses at the regular schools is, um, a tribunal assignment Pleasant Valley. So obviously, they'll have that option, um, and, uh, so they have more out of school suspension. I don't think they're set up for in-school suspension there. The other thing is cell phones, backpacks, and things like that. The, 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 this handbook is specific to Pleasant Valley, but also in, on page two. It, it notifies the students of Pleasant Valley, that they are subject to our regular handbook and the provisions therein that aren't specific to Pleasant Valley. But if there's a conflict between the regular handbook, cell phones, for example, and the Pleasant Valley handbook, the Pleasant Valley handbook controls those students. So it's just kind of more efficient to do it this way than to put it in the main handbook.
Well, that homicide, can we not just take that out? Ten day suspension for killing somebody?
Well, I mean, quite honestly, um. Our school punishment will be the least of their concerns.
Oh, right.
They're going off, and so we probably won't have to punish them at all. But there is a matrix for the state that the state puts out that has.
These kind of stuff?
As a kidnapping, um, arson, armed robbery, uh, they're all in that matrix. Because I guess some school systems, you know, had those things from time to time, but, uh.
Our handbook matches the matrix, and so, um, yeah, now the punishments, that's why it says one or more of the following. Uh, and that's kind of a general punishment for all of them, but yeah.
It seems similar, but.
It, it does, it does.
It is.
My friends have laid out that way as far as, you know, the, the numerals, the columns, like C section twelve, murder vehicle theft, and it's just kind of seems sporadic.
Some of the columns, I think, yes, it's a column.
This is, this is me, um, and my limited skills, I work with computers. We can get it dressed up. I can get somebody to help me get it looking more pretty before we put it out there, but the substance is the substance, yeah.
They haven't, the kids haven't seen this.
Yeah, the kids probably won't look at it.
My kids. It's on the website. Last year, it's on their website.
Once we get it approved.
I know, it's, it's, needs to be cleaned up. The substance is the substance, but it needs to be.
Really right.
To, to, to work on it in terms of its appearance, for sure.
Because we can take it out of the column format, put it back into the straight format, which we do with our regular handbooks.
That's not my strength.
The columns is okay. It just, it's just not normal.
Yes, I think they approve the handbook.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? And then I need a motion that we approve the PIVS student handbook.
Somebody.
Kelly. Connor, Allen Fager. Kelly. Allen Fager. It is approved.
Next up is your personal packet.
All right, um, I need a motion that we approve the personal packet, uh, as presented.
Somebody.
Second. And, uh, under Allen Fager, it is approved. Uh, we need a executive session. Any other board discussion?
Uh, I was going to ask, uh, Chris, have we got any more, talked any more about the controls?
No, um, and just to be honest, I've been working on it, but I've not been able to sew that up. I've been to be, just to be honest with you. However, what I do know is at Spring Place Elementary, which was, we talking about Bagley and Woodline?
Yeah.
Uh, not, hadn't touched that one in a minute, um, and I've got another one, uh, that we're working on with, uh, TBA and George Power. But I've still got some loose ends. I've got the type on the controls with that too.
Is there any other remodel schools besides Bagley and Woodline?
No, not, not, not that it's in the same shape as those two particular buildings. They are, they're the outliers.
But possibly could be coming, I mean.
Well, Murray County High School is, but I haven't been, I haven't pursued that one, because, you know, originally, we, we, it was going to get done with the remodel. That's kind of been skewed back, and it's just kind of been a holding pattern, uh, since then. But again, it's not as bad as Bagley and Woodline, even as, as old as the building is, those two buildings are a lot worse when it comes to the control part of it.
I have one more question. Uh, somebody talk to me about the, um, pasture oak here, I guess, back here, that parents are mowing it. Did they have to mow it just because in the school, we get.
What are we talking about?
A pasture back here, some, like the FFA pasture or something? Well, like, um.
We mowed it. We bush hog it.
Well, the other person told me they came and bush hogged it.
We do it every year.
Just one time?
Yeah.
This person came and bush hogged it before school started.
No, that's not true. No, but they did not do, I don't, I mean, I haven't been back there in a day or two, but no, that's, that's not true.
What, are they talking about a different spot they made?
Uh, the, uh, pasture back here.
Cause I've.
I mean, this was, I would say you told me that.
No, you can get the person asked about it.
We haven't done it yet, but we have been working at around our shop, um, we're getting ready to do North Murray. We've already done Econ. We just haven't done that one yet. But I've already rented the machine. It's sitting in my shop right now. We just haven't got to it yet, but it's, you know, it's on the list. But if somebody's done it, I, I haven't been back there in a day or two. I, I don't know.
Well, it was before school started, but I was, that's just what I was told. He told me he did it.
We do it every year.
Now, they've been out working on getting some mulch in at our playgrounds, trying to, uh, we found some mulch. Uh, Randy got us a contact, helped us out there, and found some mulch, so they've been putting it out, working on all playgrounds and all the schools.
My thing was, I, and I told him, I said, well, I'm sure that the maintenance is busy.
Oh, no.
And that is not top of the list, so if they did it, then, you know, they did it.
Yeah.
But it wasn't like another one on our list.
She said we won't charge her for pay.
We didn't pay it.
We get, we get to that when we get to it, just to be honest with you.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what I told him, that's in the school, that was not the top.
Thank Connor, that's something.
Yeah, uh, we're, we're a total board member, be aware of it. The Georgia Peach Education Tax Credit. I think everybody needs to be aware of that in case they're approached out in the public. Uh, but you want to go ahead, why don't you tell us?
So, um, Georgia has a thing set up, a program that's set up a year or two ago, that we're working on, trying to apply to get, uh, an application for. Essentially, you can advert, you may have seen this advertised, I think Whitfield started last year. You can advertise a project or two or three, I think up to three, and it gives citizens the right to go online, fill out a form. And basically, they can say, uh, I would like part of my income taxes earmarked for this. And so essentially, you can tell the state to, I don't know if it's all of it or a portion, I can't remember, to go toward this project or this school system. And so we've got to apply for that, uh, Tara and Jenny and I are going to talk tomorrow. Uh, we've got a meeting set up to figure out, because you have to, basically, almost like a grant, like, what are some projects we may need? And so we talked about a few things that, uh, around the system from a CTA perspective, equipment, because if you want to be a larger project, generally speaking.
So this goes to projects?
You have to have a project. They just can't send it to your general fund, and so that, it has to be an innovative, educational thing. And so you've got to go in and fill out this project, so we've been talking about, you know, maybe, I think, Greenhouse at Gladden, I think something happened to it, uh, a few years ago. So we were talking about that might be something we want to do, or if we, if there's a pathway, something we might want to try somewhere, or maybe we do that. And so essentially, what it does is you can prioritize them, and it goes out, people can sign up, send money towards it. And once that goal is met, the state will send you the money for that project to be completed and done, very much like a grant.
It's individuals or corporations?
So we, uh, uh, but individual fills out this form.
Or corporations?
Yes.
Who, who's it given to act that's filled out?
Uh, it's something you do online.
Okay.
And basically, they noted with your taxes, and the best I could tell is when ten pays his state income taxes, they would take a portion of it and put it in this pot towards that particular school system or project for.
We can have somebody near the school with, uh, own sign it today, then.
Oh, yeah, you advertise it, you put it out there. It's a great way to do that, so, uh, it was brought to my attention last year, but it was too late to kind of get in the setup for it. So we've been talking about some things throughout the summer, and we're going to try to get an application filled out so that we can do that. So, uh, hopefully, the state has to approve it, and then once it's approved, then you can start advertising, so we're hoping we can get that approved and get going. Has to touch, I think it has to touch kids and that type of thing, so it's not something we can do toward general things, but, uh, but things we need.
Playground, books.
That's where it gets it, like, it has to be innovative, educational, whatever, so books, maybe. I don't know about playground, but books maybe, unless we, we're talking about one outside. I learned a lot on the playground, but, uh, so, uh, we'll, we'll see if we can get done with that, uh, hopefully get it, application approved.
Um, what about the online school? Is that been running this week?
Yes, thank you. Getting closer. Uh, we've got twenty to twenty five, I think, somewhere right now.
We're scheduled to twenty five to thirty now, and.
That's good.
We are doing meetings, Liz, help me, starting the fifteenth, the fifteenth is, they'll start between the fifteenth and the twenty second. Depending on when their individual registration meeting is.
And we're going to take as many kids as we can get, or you are going to cap it off?
We'll have to cap it at some point, because we already have staff allotted to Pleasant Valley, Murray, and North Murray that we really can't move in the middle of the year. So if we get to more than they can handle this year, we'll have to cap it, and it might grow some next year.
So what is your number? I mean, do you know yet? Probably something around fifty.
That's kind of the goal we set. We thought if we could get started with around twenty five, and then we knew it would kind of grow as students may come in and out throughout the year. But I had a little girl up here today, and she was up here with her mom, and, uh, they were asking about an online curriculum and da, 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 and I was like, hey, did you know we're doing this? And, uh, my duck lock came down and talked to them, and we, you know, they, they, they're going to sign up.
Sign it?
Yeah, so like, it's, it's, it's a great option for a lot of our kids, even some of our kids that might be at Mount Ned that have got it there.
I don't think you'll have a lot more than you think.
We will, and you'll have kids that are leaving throughout the year. And so once we see, like, we may get to fifty, and we may say, I did something bad, and we might be able to, or we may say, ooh.
Is there, can, can, um, elementary school kids do it?
Right now, we're just doing high school.
We're just doing high school.
But eventually, is that something we're going to get to?
That's a different animal. That's a different, really and truly for us, our, our enrollment drop, we're really seeing at a high school level.
Yeah, and that's it.
And so that's kind of why we're focused in there.
I think the problem is the high school, just because they have other things that's going on.
They do. They have more options, uh, than they do, so, uh, we're, we're excited about, you know, at first, I was a little worried, oh, man. They have more options than they do, so we're, we're excited about, you know, at first I was a little worried, like, oh man. But like, it's slowly starting to grow, and so here we're getting close to thirty, that's great.
I think it's a further uphill from here, really.
It is, and I think, you know, we're working on some materials now to kind of market it, because we want it to be like kind of an underground success, because we don't want to pull anyone who's attending currently at Murray or North Murray if they're being successful. But we want to make sure they know that you stay in district, there's no tuition, you know, you have help in person locally if you need it. And that's a big selling point, because a lot of these have a waiting list, like, by the time we start school, if you decide you want to try to do Georgia Cyber, the window's already closed. You want to do Penn Foster, we're at Pennsylvania credits, and it's fifty dollars a month at least. So I'm making sure that we try to educate everybody about their options.
Anything else?
How's our, how's most of rocks going for the first week so many days?
It is a little rocky, but we got it going, it's a lot better today than.
Lot better today?
First day, yeah.
The route's going good though?
Seem to be. We're making some small adjustments as we go, nothing that turns the world upside down, so it seems to be going right.
So those eight that you combined, is that what you did with them? You combined the eight that we cut or combined?
Some of them are combined and some of them are not. I guess when you say combined, are you talking about all the grades of elementary, middle, or just the?
No, I was just talking about that we.
The routes.
The routes.
Just, just kind of blending the routes.
So you don't have eight, they're, you're short eight buses than what you had last year, right?
Yeah, real close to it, yeah.
Well, I drop off at Gladden, and I was worried death about the sixth grade, because that's the only school I have to drop off at this year's Gladden, and that is easy peasy. I mean, them children are jumping out of their cars, and I'm like, thank the Lord, they're, this ain't, you know, you don't have to kiss them and love them and go home, get them out and go home.
They're middle schoolers.
They're middle schoolers, but he is going, I don't go in the afternoon, so I don't know how the afternoons, but the morning is just like clockwork.
Unbelievably so, knock on wood.
I'm very impressed, because I thought with sixth grade, it's going to be a disaster, but it's not.
First few days, Bagley made some tweaks up there that really made a difference, and so appreciate them for being flexible, and so it's gotten better up there. We talked last week, if we get anything right, we got to get sixth grade right, and it's been a really good week. Throughout, throughout the district, every school I've visited, hiccups here and there, but kids are enjoying it. The sixth graders were liking life at the middle school, sixth grade teachers were liking life at the middle school, that was different for them. We never really talked about that, but like, they, they've enjoyed it. Pre-K at the elementary has got a few priors from time to time, or from school to school, but like, I. I think it's been.
All right, is there anything else? All right, if none, I need a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Brenda. Conrad, Allen Fager, we are adjourned.